All right, all right, let's get started. Good evening and welcome everyone to another meeting of the Inkster City Council. With the call this meeting to order, let's all rise and pledge allegiance to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Would you say?
One nation.
And you've got individual liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Letting clerk roll call please.
Mayor Wimberly.
Here.
Where?
Councilwoman Wiley. Councilwoman Washington.
Here.
Councilwoman Shaw. Councilwoman Howard.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
And Councilwoman Chisholm.
Here.
We have five present and two absent as a mouth.
Well, Mr. Shaw is on, Councilwoman Shaw is on, and Councilwoman Wiley is on, she's just on mute.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm here. I don't know. I know she stepped away. There she is. Can we get her off of mute, please?
Yeah.
Well, we have seven present mayor.
All right, perfect. Closed session, we're gonna have that at the end. Do we have any closed session items? Attorney Jones is either?
He's here. Him and Eric are both here, so I believe we do, I'm looking for their names right.
Yes, we're definitely gonna have some, so we're gonna push that down to the end of the agenda. Approval of the agenda with the one addition mayor pro temp?
Uh, Stuart Rosenblatt under presentation.
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
It's been properly moved and supported. Can I get a roll call vote?
Councilmember.
Might have to say that again.
Right, yeah, I couldn't hear it.
Can I get a roll call vote for support?
Yes. Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley. Councilmember Wiley.
Yeah.
Okay, I was just, uh, we're doing the roll call vote for the agenda. And is that a yes for, um, the approval of the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, and Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
And Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
We have six yess mayor.
Great, we have an agenda, let's move right along. Uh, presentations, Mr. Rosenblatt, it's on the line for Resolution 6422.
He is unmuted. He is unmuted.
Hello? Can you hear us?
Yes, we can hear you, sir. Hi.
Great. Okay, I know we have three minutes, this is a, a quick, uh, thing on, uh, support for the resolution which endorses the bill now in front of Congress, uh, HR 6422, for a gigantic FDR-style National Infrastructure Bank. Now, I'm gonna let my wife make the presentation and we'll both take questions.
I just wanna tell everybody that, uh, this bill was introduced by Congressman Danny Davis at the end of March, and it's been absolutely fortuitous that this is coming in the middle of a huge crisis, uh, not just COVID, but everything that we're seeing in the social demonstrations. Um, and I think that, uh, that this bill actually addresses everything, whether you're talking about unemployment, the collapsing infrastructure is what we're seeing in Michigan with the water crisis, the dams busting open, uh, bridges falling down, roads, uh, we need affordable housing, everything that people need as part of their everyday life. So, we are, uh, and I also would like to tell you that in the, uh, text of the bill, uh, the investments into infrastructure go all over the country into rural areas, urban areas, into disadvantaged areas, areas that have been in poverty for the over thirty years. It explicitly says that the investments have to be in compliance with the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. So, what we're talking about is really a big bull change in direction that we literally haven't seen since the nineteen sixties. So, we really urge you to support this, uh, resolution. Uh, this is, uh, to get cosponsors to the Davis-Moulton Bill, HR 6422. And, uh, and just so that you know, this has been done four times in US history that we had a National Infrastructure Bank. It was last done by Franklin Roosevelt during the Great Depression, prior to that by Abraham Lincoln, and it goes all the way back to George Washington. So, this is how we built the country, and, uh, and I urge you to support the resolution. I wanna thank you for inviting us, uh, to speak, and anybody that has any questions, just let us know.
Well, thank you so much. Um, is there any questions from the body? All right, here in none, let's move, the public, the, the presentation.
Can I take, uh, ten seconds just on endorsements? Uh, just so you know, this has been endorsed by the National Association of Minority Contractors, National Congress of Black Women, National Association of Counties, uh, National Latino Farmers and Ranchers, many, uh, labor unions and others. Uh, the bill mandates the creation of twenty-five million new jobs at union wages, specifically to build urban and rural cities, schools, hospitals, the works. Okay, that probably is three minutes.
Outstanding. Any, any questions from the body? All right, here in none, let's move right along. Thank you so very much, Mr. Rosenblatt.
Thank you all for your time, really appreciate it.
Thank you so much. All right, moving right along. Uh, Felicia, as it relates to public hearing, do we open up public hearing?
Yes, um, we're having a public hearing on the FY twenty-twenty-one City of Inkster Budget and Proposed Water and Sewerage Rates.
Is there support to open up public hearing?
Support.
And who, who moved?
Councilman Shaw, I think.
Councilman Shaw moved?
Yes.
Our support?
Yes.
Do we roll call for this, or we just hope?
You don't, you can just open the public hearing.
All right, good then. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, public hearing open. Darren, all yours, my friend.
Well, no, I, I think at this point, it's just if anyone from the public wants to, to speak in, in connection with the budget.
All right, and Councilman Chisholm, are you getting to?
Yep, anybody from the general public, if you were calling in by telephone and you have questions or comments, you press star nine. Of course, anybody who is connected with the Zoom application or through the Zoom website, you should have the app option to raise your hand. For caller, star nine is what will raise your hand, so that we can unmute you. And we have one hand raised. I'm unmuting them right now. And caller, you are unmuted.
I have a question, I wasn't at the final budget meeting, but I, we.
Caller, and, and, and apologize this for the sake of the meeting, if you could, um, say your name.
This is Yvette Brock.
Yvette Brock, all right.
Yeah.
What's your question?
I have a question, I wasn't at the final, um, budget meeting, but have we incorporated the money that was coming via basically a gift from some proprietors in the city into the budget? And if so, how are we guaranteeing that money's gonna come in? Why are we budgeting that?
And Mr. Carrington, do you, do you understand what she's speaking to? Unmute, unmute, Mr. Carrington, please.
Thanks, thanks, Steve, I muted myself, forgot I couldn't unmute. So, I do, I do understand, um, Ms. Brock's question. Um, she's referring to the, uh, projection that's, that's been included in the, uh, mayor's recommended budget, and as we start drafting the, um, approved budget, there's a projection in there specifically in the revenues section of the general fund budget for, uh, contribution slash donations from cannabis companies, uh, and expectation of, um, kind of an agreement being finalized and put into place. The initial recommend, recommended budget had that projection at five hundred thousand dollars. The current draft of the, for the approved budget, um, after discussion with council and within the administration, that projection has been, uh, reduced down to a total of one hundred and fifty thousand. So, that's the current amount, um, that's, that's in the, uh, budget drafts, um, you know, uh, that we, we expect to, to move forward with, um, if that answers Ms. Brock's question.
If I may, uh, Darren, what reassurance do we have that they're gonna pay that? Because this is nothing more than a gift, it's not even enforceable in court, right?
Um, well, we, there has been some discussions, um, with the city and, and within the administration and the city, uh, looking to put in place, um, some things in regards to the, uh, ordinance, um, and having some type of, uh, community-based benefits agreement. Those are some of the things that are, that are currently on the table that we expect to, um, have in place during the upcoming fiscal year. Uh, no, uh, contracts or nothing, no legally binding agreements have been, been hammered out at this point in time. Um, but, and you know, Ms. Brock, as you know, with the budget, we try and, and, um, include all, uh, projections and assumptions that we think make sense, and, um, you know, not only the fact that we included this category, but the amount, and that's, that's, that's the primary reason why we reduced it to one hundred and fifty thousand was that, uh, we wanted to have an amount that we felt, uh, highly confident about in terms of where we are, the discussions that have been had. The administration has had a number of discussions with these companies, um, and looking at some of the neighboring communities, uh, in terms of the pattern of the agreements that have been, um, been able to get successfully negotiated. We feel that that hundred and fifty thousand dollar amount is an amount that we can reliably include in the budget.
Thank you. Thanks.
You're welcome.
I did see that, uh, I think she attempted to raise her hand, Shirley Hankerson, because it's saying she's waving, but I believe that's the same thing. Is I'm muting her? And Shirley gonna need you to click unmute, or click accept to unmute when I unmute you, if you were trying to, there you go.
Good evening, all. Um, my question is, and how would that hundred and fifty thou- thousand be used? I know in the past, um, when we had, um, different companies, especially cannabis companies that are here in the city, what they would do, they would sponsor a police officer or firefighter. So, how are we gonna use that money?
Um, it, it's going to go into general fund, I mean, there hasn't been, you know, any specific discussion. Um, right now, the expectation that it would be, um, given in a contribution slash donation to the city, um, and, and basically in an unrestricted manner, so that it can be utilized for however the, uh, city deems best, um, within the general fund. Um, you know, I think more specifically to your point about public safety, certainly we have more than enough costs, uh, within public safety in both the fire department and police department, so that if there is a specific, um, uh, tie to that donation, if, you know, if somebody wants to make a donation specifically, specifically within general fund to, to, to the public safety departments, um, we would be able to, uh, to facilitate that and to, uh, accept that contribution consistent with their, their wishes.
Okay. I have one more question. Um, as long as it's not gonna be used for, for an extra person in the administrative, I'm, I'm fine with that, because it needs to go to something that, that's really needed in the city, and I don't think it should be used for an extra administrator, uh, for the mayor's office, okay?
Sure, and, 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 um, on that point, you know, any, any, um, appropriation or, or expense, uh, you know, regardless of the department, has to be done consistent with the city's charter, with the state budget, uh, act, and so those require council approval. Um, and so if anything like that, um, were to occur, um, it would be handled like any other appropriation that, that, uh, would need to, to, uh, go before council and, and, uh, require, uh, get the necessary required approval.
Okay, thanks.
Councilman Chisholm, any others?
I don't see any at this time, and anybody who might not have heard, in order to raise your hand, uh, to speak at this particular time, star nine from your cell phone, or if you have the wave option on your device, that's, uh, feasible as well. But I don't see any more, let me just scroll down and make sure, because they normally fly up to the top. Don't see anyone. Oh, wait, we just got, or, hold on. There we go.
Uh, mayor, so this is Yvette Brock again, I just got one other question. I notice under most categories, they have something under here, like professional services under almost every major category, what is that?
Um, so it, it, it just depends on, uh, Ms. Brock, what department you're referring to. Generally, um, when we have any type of, um, consultant, advisor, anyone that's providing professional services, um, we would generally, um, put them into that category, and that's really just done from an accounting standpoint. Um, so if, if there's a specific department, I can provide you more details, um, you know, in terms of what specific vendor or what specific service is, is captured within that, um, department, within that category in a, in a given department.
Okay, I was just asking, because it seems to be under most headings, is under fires, under police, under administration, is, is under every heading.
Yes, yeah, so it's, 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 it's really, uh, again, it's, it's a, um, category that, that by and large we use for consultants and, and, um, anyone that's providing professional services, and so we place them in that category and try and match it to the appropriate department. Um, and again, it's really, um, you know, the, the wording of that is, is the, the title of that particular category is really just designed for, for budget and accounting purposes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Councilman Chisholm, you see anyone else?
I don't see any other hands raised. Final call for speaking to the, uh, during the public hearing for the budget. If you have just called in, star nine is how you raise your hand, or if you are on video, you should have the wave hand or raise hand option. And I don't see anything further.
All right, motion to close public hearing?
So move, Mr. Chair.
And move support?
Support.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Close public hearing. Consent agenda.
Some more.
Been moved and supported, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? I just have a motion carries. Boards and commissions. Councilman Williams?
No.
Councilwoman Wiley?
Um, no.
Councilman Chisholm?
Aye.
Mayor pro temp, Howard?
I have none.
And Councilwoman Washington?
None.
All right, moving right along. Previous business, ordinance first reading, second reading, new business.
Item A under new business is consideration and approval of HR 6422 Resolution in support of the need to build infrastructure, support creating great paying jobs, and support actions.
Don't move.
For. Been properly moved and supported, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Well, I'm sorry, discussion, I'm sorry. I apologize, moving too fast. Any discussion on the matter? All right, here in none, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, any ayes? I just have a motion carry.
Item B is adoption of the FY twenty-twenty-one General and Special Appropriations Act Resolution and Budgets.
What's your pleasure?
Um, so I just wanted to, um, kinda update everyone here. I know, um, on Saturday, I sent around, uh, the draft of the approved budget, um, and wanted to cover that. There were a few questions that I did address, uh, in some conversations with individual council members, but wanted to, um, you know, go over any questions that, that were, were, were provided. There were two items that I did wanna cover in detail before we, uh, got started, if, if that's in order. One is for, um, the water rates. And then secondly would be, uh, as everyone knows, on the, um, draft approved budget, there was a proposed spec, uh, public lighting specialist assessment. So, I wanted just to take a few moments and cover those, um, those, uh, two items. Um, and I don't know if it's Troy or Phoenix, I've got, and, uh, a couple of documents that I wanted to share, uh, so if I could get, uh, get those pulled, uh, or the ability to pull those up. Don't go on it, you know what? I'm, um, huh, I'm on, I'm on, I'm looking at my computer, I'm on my, my iPad here, uh.
Can you call there from your computer real quick?
Or, yeah, yeah, let me, uh, can you text me the, the meeting ID or do, um?
Yeah, I can text it, so you, you wanted to take your email?
Uh, either one, doesn't matter. Just realized that was on two different devices here.
ID is eight-three-one.
Okay, I, I just finished, it sent me a.
Oh, he just sent you a, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Cody. Okay, I'm, I'm gonna try, because I'm having a little delay in getting that, um, Phoenix, I'm gonna just email you the, uh, the documents, if you just, uh, if you can pull those up for me.
Okay, not a problem.
And let's, um, so Phoenix, those are being sent now. Let's start with the water, uh, document. Okay, thanks, Phoenix. We, um, so this, this is just to give a quick, uh, overview of the proposed water rates. Phoenix, if we can go to the next slide. Um, and this is where we have, uh, we list the, the water rates from the last several years, along with the water rate that's being proposed for this current fiscal year. Um, the, the proposed water rate is on the, uh, far right in the, uh, next to last column under proposed FY twenty-twenty-one. At the bottom, you see a total of, uh, sixteen dollars and seventy-five cents. That would be the total, uh, cost, uh, of the water rate on a per-unit basis. Moving one column to the left, you see the actual for FY twenty-twenty, um, which reflects the, the current water rate on a per-unit basis of fifteen dollars and forty-five cents. So, if you look at the, the final column there, you can see that the, um, proposed increase is a total increase of a dollar thirty, um, and a percentage increase of, of, of about eight-point-four percent, eight-point-four-one percent. Um, and so you can kinda see, and looking at the totals there, going back, you can see the, the different water rates that the sea has had in the last several fiscal years. Um, so that, that's the number there. Uh, Phoenix, if we can go down to the next, uh, slide. And this just shows on an annual basis what the increase has been. This doesn't show, um, the total, it's just each year, what the increase has been. So, you can see, um, you know, in some years, we've had the rates go down, and then, and, uh, you know, most years, the rates have been increased. Um, so again, uh, the current proposed rate is at, uh, an increase over the current rate, which is fifteen dollars and forty-five cents, uh, increasing it by eight-point-four-one percent to a total of sixteen-point-seven-five, which is, again, the per-unit basis. Um, when we get into the reason for that, and Phoenix, if we can go back to the prior slide, um, we generate these rates based on a rate model, what we call a rate model, where we take, um, several, uh, inputs, components of the overall cost revenues and expenses. Um, and if you recall, we've had, uh, several studies that have been done and several, uh, recent essentially mandates that have been placed before the city, uh, its water department, where we're having to do a much larger amount of capital, uh, investment. Um, the city's having to undergo a, a pretty sizable, uh, repair and replacement program. So, that's largely driving up, uh, the rate for this fiscal year, particularly when we look at the sewer side. Um, there are a few, few main things that are going on. One is what's happening with the, uh, lead service replacement. We're having to do six to seven million dollars of, of, uh, replacing lead service lines across the city uh, at an approximate cost of between six and seven million dollars, um, spread out over, over about thirteen years. But we're having to start that in fiscal year twenty-one, uh, beginning in July, July first. Uh, recently, the ci- city can, uh, completed this, uh, storm, uh, the Saw Grant, where the city did an in-depth study of the, um, the sewer line, uh, conditions across the city, and the, the total bill on that came, has come in at approximately sixty million dollars. So, we're having to do, um, a number of repairs related to that. We're projecting that out over a twenty-year timeline, so there's three million dollars of repairs, uh, that we're projecting for, for the coming fiscal year. Additionally, we have, um, the repair and replacement program for the, under the drinking water and clean water, which is our, um, our, uh, water mains and our, uh, sewer lines. Um, and there's several million dol- several, several million dollars of, of, uh, construction and repair and replacement that, uh, need to go on under, uh, uh, for our water main and our sewer line. So, uh, as had been discussed prior, uh, you know, prior meetings, we've got a large amount of capital, uh, repairs, replacements that we have to, uh, take on, really, you know, immediately in the next fiscal year. And based on that, um, you know, we're, we're at a point where the, the rate model and the, the, the amount of spending that is being required, much more than in prior years, leads us to having to. required, much more than prior years, leads us to having to end up with this this increase of about 8.4% in a per unit cost of $16.75 to the customers. So just wanted to open up if there's any questions on that.
Yes, Mr. Chair. You know, that's very, very expensive. I apologize for not being able to get back with you, Mr. Carrington. I tried to call you, but I was getting some interruptions on your phone there. That's very expensive. It's very expensive of $16.75 to the taxpayers here. I noticed that in the FY 16 and FY 17, there was no consistency to the to the rates of the past 2014, 15. I remember those rates very well because we had a whole bunch of folks in City Hall that was really unpleased about some of those rates that were going up. And I understand that at the time, we were going through the meter change and some of the some of those water bills wasn't being collected, and I understood that. But we didn't have any any consistency of foreseeing these even capital projects because there's always some capital projects in sewage. So my question would be, why was there no consistency? And why was those rates dropped down and not continuous flow like we had projected many years ago?
And I assume you're referring to the decrease in FY 16 and FY 17?
Yes.
Okay.
And then also, I don't want to steal your thought on that. Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
No, go ahead. I'm listening. I'm fine.
And I would like to to understand the presentations that were that was given to the council body at that time in 2016 and 17 to, you know, come up with a decrease in the in the water because there's always some capital improvements that needs to be done.
Yeah, and, you know, both FY 16 and FY 17 predates my tenure. I wasn't involved in that process during those budget years. But I can say, you know, I think in, you know, compared to, say, four or five years ago, where we are now is a much different environment. You know, we're, you know, post the city of Flint. I think that was a very eventful situation in terms of how the state and other agencies handle the infrastructure improvements. And before, these these items may have been known to some extent or the other, but we didn't have, we certainly didn't have two things. One, we didn't have cost certainty like we do now. And secondly, we didn't have the mandates in the way that we do now. And so, you know, again, I can't necessarily speak to that. You know, I know there was some people on council and others who may have may have been involved or citizens who may have been been involved then. But just, you know, I think there's those two things. Like I say, post Flint, there's a much greater sense of urgency in terms of identifying what needs to be repaired. That was one of the big reasons for the Saw Grant. I was talking with with one of the council members earlier today and just, you know, reminding everyone about how we got the Saw Grant. But the, you know, the purpose of the Saw Grant was to try and identify and put a price tag on what what repairs needed to happen. We didn't get, we haven't gotten a grant on making those repairs. So there's a, like I say, a much, much greater certainty of what the costs are. And there's much greater sense of urgency in getting those repairs. We're being forced to commit to making those repairs in a way that we had not had to do previously. So, you know, in that environment, you know, speaking of FY 16 and FY 17, you didn't have necessarily have those factors at play, you know, keeping in mind that FY 17 would have been kind of spring of 2016. And again, those, I think those factors, you know, were not in play. And I think those are some of the more important factors in terms of why we're having to firmly commit to making these repairs on a very specific timeline.
Yeah, and I understand that, you know, you know, I was always, you know, taught that, you know, we always kind of prepare, you know, for for the worst of the storms that we have went through. So we never look to, you know, always go backwards or decrease, but always to try to keep a consistency in in the rates. Because as you look at, as you look at the population here, is is getting very expensive to live here. And, you know, we don't want to, from my standpoint, you know, to just expense everybody out with these water rates. And I just want you to understand a little bit of how I'm concerned about it because I have saw it happen before. You know, when we first introduced, you know, the $13 and it was $14, then it was $15. And it was a real sticking point in those previous years. And it was a real big concern by the citizens concerning these these water rates. Now, the point I want to get to is in the restricted unrestricted fund, is there still 6.6 million in the unrestricted?
There's a little, there's a little less than that. We're probably between 5 and a half and 5.8 million currently. You know, I think we'll, we'll probably be somewhere between 5 and a half and 6 million, just depending upon, you know, where we are in terms of paying on some some projects and processing some payments and the like. But there's still a fair amount of cash that is available. And that certainly went into, was taken into consideration when we developed these rates, Councilman Shaw.
And and these projects are going to consist of 15 to 20 years. Am I right?
Yeah, for sure. The Saw Grant, I think, is 20 years. And I know Mr. Business is online. He can correct me if I say anything that's incorrect. Right now, that's probably the the longest timeline that we have. I know there are a number of requirements that we have to do for Eagle, I believe, under the drinking water and clean water. But I know the Saw Grant is based on a 20-year timeline. And the current working estimate we have is $60 million total for that.
Now, in the in the net surplus, is it still 900,000 or? In in the net surplus?
Yeah, that's more of an end of the year projection. I don't have, you know, outside of what we currently have in the in the amended budget, I don't have any any different information. But again, we do take all that into consideration. You know, what the current financial standing is, what the, you know, the amended budget takes cost for, what what other sources of funding we may have. We have a half a million dollar grant that we are able to to help defray the cost. So we try and factor all those things in, you know, because we all, you know, I know I can say, you know, we share your concern in terms of where the water rates are. The main thing, you know, again, the main thing driving this is that we have to, you know, for the fiscal integrity of the water system, we have to make sure that we're at a rate that's going to generate revenues that's necessary to cover the costs of the system. And I think, again, the biggest thing that's different is that we now got some pretty sizable mandates that the city's facing. And we're like a lot of communities in Southeastern Michigan and across the state. You know, we didn't have a $60 million price tag in prior years that we were having to confront. We do now. And that's, you know, really just the reality of the situation.
And yeah, I understand. And, you know, but the revenues, the revenues have been going up in an upward swing from 16, 17, 18, 19, too, as well, you know, in in the water and sewage. So, you know, I'm just, I'm just, you know, concerned, you know, that, you know, that's, that's a hefty price tag as well of a buck 30. You know, I'm definitely looking at something in in the middle of that and not just, just, you know, a great big hit with that. And that's all that's all I have. That's all I have.
I understand. Okay.
Mr. Carrington, it also should be stated that this is not going to be the final rate change that we're looking at. So if you can speak to that as well.
Are you referencing the Rouge Valley, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah. So, yeah, as the mayor alluded to, you know, there's, there's several big ticket items that we have on the horizon. And these were presented in prior meetings to council and to the residents. As I mentioned, we've got the lead service replacement. We have the Saw Grant. And then what the mayor alluded to was the Rouge Valley. Right now, we don't have any real, we have no estimate on that. I think as of last week, Mr. Business had had some communication with the folks that oversee that program. So we don't have any kind of cost estimate, nor do we have any particular idea of how that cost is going to be shared, covered, handled. So that's something else that, you know, has been on the horizon. And we want to be transparent in reminding everyone that that's still a component of the the water system that will need to be addressed. When that will happen, I think, and Jerome, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think we were saying, we were told it'll be late this year, sometime in the fall, when we when we're able to get more information on what that's going to look like. But this is just based on the information that we have, the cost that we we know of, and what ability we have to fund those costs, particularly within the next fiscal year, making sure that we address those things that we're required to address in fiscal year 2021.
And just to be clear, these are mandates from the state. So if we don't do this, then what's the alternative or what's the consequence?
I mean, I know the answer to that. I just think I want Mr. Carrington to be clear with that.
Yeah, I think Mr. Business can probably speak to that a little better than I can.
Go ahead, Mr. Business.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman, the public. To the mayor's point, all these projects have come about from us accepting grants from the state and getting awarded. So each time we get awarded X amount of dollars, at the end of that, I have to do what they call an asset management plan. And when I submit that plan, it's on behalf of the city and the residents. This is where we're planning and steps on doing improvements. And so now those improvements have to come into place. And that's why the budget looks like that. So to the mayor's point, you know, you start getting into violations and you start getting into oversight from the state because they take their water very serious, as Mr. Carron has stated to you guys. And we don't want to go down that road. I think I have a good working relationship right now with Eagle, all the way up to Lansing. I've met with the people. I've expressed our financial burdens and they understand that. But at the same time, too, we have to do something. And and what we're presenting to you tonight is just a fragment of what we have to do. Like Mr. Carrington said, the sewer is over 20 years. So that's 60 million. That's not including the water. We still got to address our water infrastructure. We're doing that. And we still got to deal with the lead and copper. So, you know, I mean, I understand. I mean, I agree with Councilman Shaw. That number is high. But a lot of times, you know, in the 24 years I've been here, when the water rates have come before mayor and council, they've always backed down off of certain increases and sometimes decreased it. But now we can't do that because now I'm mandated to do certain things. And I have to be compliant. And and I plan to do that for the city of East, because we don't want to get into violations. We don't want to get into state oversight. Then we really be in trouble.
In order, do we have a question?
I don't know if Councilman Shaw was still talking. I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
Councilman Shaw, you yield the floor?
Yeah, yes, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Here. What projects will be done first? Would it be the water, water and lead?
So, so we have a few few specific projects identified for fiscal year 2021. So on the lead service line, that that project will be done every year. So and Jerome can more detail. But basically, we've got a set number of years to repair and replace all of the last service, to replace all the last service lines. And we're going to be doing that pretty much evenly throughout the next 13 years. So that's going to get started in next fiscal year. We also have some of the work under the Saw Grant. And then what's that Jerome Storm Access? What is?
That's the sanitary sewer combined. So we have, that work will begin in FY 21 in July, too. We will put a bid package together and go out for bid, bring it back before mayor and council to get a contractor under. Because we have some CCOs here that are category five. And I mean, a lot of council members are new, but when we did our PAA's study, some of our roles came in a category five. Those are the worst conditions. So we will be addressing those right away in FY 21 and moving forward. And as Mr. Carrington stated, the land and copper is for 13 years. We have 13 years to replace 67 services each year under the state guideline. So. I hope I answered your question, Mayor Protem.
Yes, I have another one. Under the Rouge, when you mentioned Rouge, is that the Rouge River that the state, what was it, the county wanted us to pitch in to help clean up? Is that what you was referring to or Mr. Carrington was referring to?
Yeah, there, there, there's two things going on with the Rouge Valley. One, we belong to the Rouge Valley because our sewer travels down the Rouge River into a 60-inch sewer and then it goes to Gleewa for cleaning. The second part of that is, I mean, Mayor Protem, Howard, you were on, I think Councilwoman Wylie and Chiswell were on when the Gleewa sent their representative veto to speak to you about Wayne County borrowing $55 million from the state to clean up the Rouge River. And all 17 communities had to pitch in. We had to pass a resolution. That's part two of the Rouge, which we will be quiet twice a year to make a payment. That's separate from the Rouge Valley. And like Mr. Carrington spoke, I have reached out to them. It comes to the pandemic. You know, the budget is not out yet. They said it should be out by October. So we truly, I asked them as of last week if they could give me a preliminary, some kind of number that we can stick into the budget. I told them about this meeting tonight, and they said, no, they couldn't do that. So that's another number we're not certain of right now, but we will know in October. So, you know, we'll probably have to do a budget amendment in October to include those numbers.
Okay, okay. So what about the Greenway project? Is that included in this budget?
That's out of road fund. That's a separate project.
Okay, okay, okay. All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
I got a question.
Question, Councilman Williams?
Okay, we're talking about the increase on the rates for the people in the community. Okay, I'm kind of confused. What is all that going to cover? Because I remember one while we was talking about the money that we have to pay the county. Okay. And I didn't hear that in this increase. So what I'm trying to figure out now is exactly, exactly how much increase that we're going to have to pay more than this 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 dollar and 35 cent that we're talking about increasing. uh, more than this, this, this dollar and thirty-five cent that we're talking about increasing.
I'm, I'm sorry. Repeat your question for me.
My, my question is this. You're asking for a dollar and thirty cent increase in the water rates, okay? And you didn't indicate whether or not that's going to cover the Rouge and the, uh, Wayne County or whatever. That's, I'm, I'm kind of confused with that because if in fact that the, the, the increased rates that you have, it's not going to cover that, then that means that somehow we're going to have to increase more than what we're talking.
Sure. Okay, I, I think I got it. So, yeah, so, um, what, what I, what I spoke to earlier was that we tried to capture everything that we have some, some projection on. The one thing that we don't, that we know is on our radar, that has been on our radar for some time. Um, we've discussed it and, um, you know, with this council, it was, it was brought before prior council. Um, is the Rouge Valley. Um, that's what I was speaking to and what, what Director Bivens was speaking to. We haven't gotten any, any kind of estimates from them. So we don't know what that number is going to look like. We don't know how they're going to structure that. We don't know if we got to start paying it right away, if there's going to be some kind of offset or, you know, there can be some other kind of funding provided. We know it's coming. We just don't know what it's going to look like, how much it's going to cost. But everything else, um, that we had talked about prior, the lead service lines, the SAW grant, um, the clean water, drinking water, all those things are, are included in this, uh, this proposed increase.
Well, I, you know, we're talking about increasing the water rates and, and my district, as you know, and I'm glad Mr. Bivens is on the line. We have a serious problem with the water pumps not, not holding over in that area. Okay, many people, basements are getting flooded and, and then now you, you telling the representative to go back and tell them that we're going to increase the water rates, but yet instead we got so many people over there, the basements are flooding. The pumps are not constantly, uh, taking on the water there. So my question is, if these rates increase, what is going to, what is going to happen there? Now, I know Mr. Bivens did tell me that he has some engineer look, looking into the matter. But now that he's on the line, maybe you can tell me if we talk about increasing the water rates, if this is going to be taken care of because people have been crying. I mean, well, no, they've been angry. Let me put it like that. Okay, they constantly got to see their basements flooded over and over and over again. And then, you know, we're not answering the solution. We don't, we, we haven't come up with a solution yet.
No, I, 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 I understand your point, Councilman. Um, I mean, and Mr. Bivens can chime in. I think this is, you know, one of the reasons why, um, and I, and I don't know the, the exact situation. I know you had some conversations with, with Director Bivens. Um, but one of the reasons why we are experiencing issues with our infrastructure is because, uh, like a number of communities, particularly in our area, we have an age system. Uh, and unfortunately we have not, you know, like most communities, if not all communities, we have not kept up with the maintenance and repair of our infrastructure. Um, this program that we're currently having to do will, is specifically to address that, is to begin repairing and replacing so that we can avoid those types of issues. Um, now, how soon we will do that, again, like with, with the SAW grant, this is a twenty-year program. Very, very little of this is going to be done overnight. We have some specific pro- programs. I think Jerome, we talked about doing Avondale, I believe is one of the programs that we've talked about. Um, there's some repairs to Andover. Um, but, you know, the purpose of this is to, to now start doing the repairs that we have, have kind of uh, fallen behind, not in the past few years, but in the past few decades. Um, and this is, this is just, you know, a situation where it's, it's, um, we're having to make up for, for work that probably should have been done ten, twenty, even thirty years ago in some, some regards.
And, and to your question, um, Councilman, uh, Williams and to the body and to the mayor, Andover is one of the projects that Mr. Carrington just spoke of. It's, it's in FY twenty's budget. We're doing it now. It's to carry over to FY twenty. Hopefully before the fall hit, I will have some resolution on that. So we have been diligently working on that for a year now. And that's one of my Eagle requirements, as the mayor spoke to. So I am addressing that issue in that area, um, where, I mean.
Okay, that, that, that's what I wanted to hear you say because I'll tell you what, it, it is, it, it is a serious problem in that area. Okay, and I don't, I don't know, um, how, how the kind of pumps y'all put over there, how come we having so much problem with them? And all this supposed to have been, ought to have been able to take care of all of this, once we put all them brand new pump, pump systems over in the last two or three years. Okay, so I don't understand what's going on with that.
That's why we, we, that's why it's under investigation right now because I need to understand why. I know we eliminated a pump station over there several years ago on burden. And literally we eliminated one pump station and we put one, we did an underground connection on a furnace. So I need to understand to myself. And as I have explained to the mayor, keep him abreast of situations that's going on in that area. That's why we're doing the model, hydraulic model right now and study to see if that pump station is meeting its capacity. But if not, we will have to increase it, you know, and that's what the state is working with us on right now. So I'm taking all that into consideration, sir.
One, one, I want to understand one thing, Mr. Carrington. Okay, I, I understand you, you want this increase, dollar and thirty cent per, per unit. Am I right?
Well, nah. I'm going to pause there. I don't, I don't want this increase. I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm presenting, I'm presenting, I'm just presenting like based on what we need to do. Um, this is most certainly the, this is most certainly the recommendation I make. Let's be clear on that. But it's not like I'm just waking up, uh, in the morning like, oh, I want to hike the rates up above third. Um,
So actually, we can get by with it?
What's that?
Are you saying we can get by with, without increasing the rates?
No, 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 no. I'm, I'm, let's be clear. I, I most certainly one hundred percent recommend mending, we go with the, the, the sixteen dollars and seventy-five cents. That's not what I want. I'm just saying, based on the, the numbers, that's what, that's what we're going to need to do in order to operate the system, make the capital improvements. That's what we need to do. That's, that's most clearly one hundred percent my recommendation, without question. It ain't, it's not my opinion. It is not my desire. It's not some, you know, I'm not just, I just don't want this. Um, I'm just saying, this is what, this is what we, based on where we are today, this is what we need, one, most certainly.
All before.
Did we lose Mr. Carrington?
No, Mr. Carrington's here.
Oh, okay.
Looked like he had.
I'm here, I'm here.
Um, Mr. Chair, um,
Yes.
Was, um,
I don't know. I, I don't know, but was Reverend Williams done?
Yeah, I'm too.
Okay.
Go ahead, Councilman. Mayor Proton.
I have Moran's recommendation because I know they, they give their recommendation as well, or you guys. I don't know how you work that out.
Yeah, no, they're, they're, they're one hundred percent, um, you know, they, they, they're the ones who run, run the rate model. Um, we've had some communications. We've had some, some meetings internally within the administration. Uh, one hundred percent, you know, again, uh, like I said, they're solidly saying that, um, their recommendation is that we need to charge, charge that rate.
Okay.
You know, to your point, Mayor Proton, we looked at to, like, three or four different alternatives and looked at possibly increasing the rate by half this year, but the money still exists. So we, we, we still, we still have to fund it. So we, we could possibly say, okay, we're going to do half the rate model this year, but then next year it'll be double the amount. Because this is over, what is it, a fifteen or twenty-year period, Aaron?
Um, so, so we, we kind of use a, a five-year projection on our capital investment. Um, and to the mayor's point, really and truly, because we know these projects are going to have to happen. Um, so let's take, um, you know, Easton Outfall is one, one project. By delaying it a year, we're really just delaying, it's a temporary increase, temporary delay in the increase. The project's not going anywhere. And the sooner we get this stuff repaired, the less likely it is to cause any further problems. You know, in a perfect world, we would, would just start spending, you know, sixty, seventy million dollars out the gate and trying to prove, trying to prove everything because then we avoid any further costs or, or breakdowns, but we know we can't do that. And so it, 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 there's not a lot of value in delaying any increases, particularly when we know we're going to have to pay these things.
Okay, uh, one more last question. Um, I do know a lot of people may not be on this call or may not see this. Does it, is it any way that we can maybe, I know the water bills are, uh, go, they go out every month. But I'm not sure if we have enough room to actually put the jobs that have to be done, you know, with our rate increase. So everyone can see this is the reason why, because you know our phones are going to be ringing off the hook. But a lot of people don't wa- don't watch it or not on Zoom. So is it anywhere possible that we can include that in the water bills? And just tell people what the capital improvements that we are doing that's causing the water rates to increase?
Uh, yes, certainly. And I think that's, um, to your point, Mayor Proton, and I think it's, it's an excellent one. Um, you know, one of the things we certainly, um, have, you know, we've discussed within the administration is, is, you know, taking some, some additional steps to communicate what's going on, um, you know, operationally, what the plans are, where we, where we stand. We have some specific requirements on the lead service lines. Um, but I think it is value for, for the, as it is, in honesty, for us to, um, you know, do, do, take, put a little more effort behind communicating what's going on, why is happening, where things stand. Um, and we, we certainly have discussed that and we'll, we'll be taking those steps.
Okay, thank you. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, hearing that, moving right along. Um, Darren, what's the action that's needed here? Do you, you, did you have something else that we needed to?
Uh, I just wanted to briefly present the lighting assessment. I think the discussion is where we were going to provide, um, council an opportunity to, um, kind of digest the, uh, draft of the approved budget. Um, that was presented to them on Saturday. And that we would, uh, then entertain, uh, a special meeting or something um, in the next week or so, once we've got, had some additional communication and can come up with an agreed upon approved budget that can be presented and voted upon. Uh, and so, uh, as I mentioned, one of the other things that was also included in the current draft of the approved budget, uh, as we discussed earlier, there was a reduction in the, and I think we discussed this earlier, I've had some, I've had a number of conversations. I apologize if I'm mixing things up, but I, I believe we discussed earlier the reduction in the, um, contribution from the cannabis companies.
Yes, you mentioned that.
Okay, so, so we reduced that by three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, as you know, we've already uh, included some pretty significant cost reductions in the current draft of the budget. Um, in order to avoid further, uh, reductions, one of the things that, that, uh, we looked at was trying to identify an alternative revenue source. Um, one of the things is, and I wanted to present this to council and to the, uh, citizens this evening, um, is a, is a special, what we call a public lighting special assessment. Um, and Phineas, if we can just roll to the next, um, next slide here. So again, this is, this is the public lighting special assessment. Um, what it is, it would, is a special assessment that's levered against the real property in the city. It's specifically designed to generate revenue, uh, to cover the costs for public lighting, to cover the costs for providing and maintaining streetlights across the city. Um, that cost currently is incurred in the general fund. For fiscal year twenty-one, we're projecting about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars in, in expenses for public lighting. Um, the public lighting special assessment is something that is being done in, in a number of different communities, including Westland, Taylor and Garden City. Uh, and in terms of structuring this special assessment, there's a few methods that, uh, a few different methods that can be used to structure this. So let's, let's turn Phineas. Um, so wanted to go over the, the methods. Um, so again, this is a, this is, uh, special assessment, a tax assessment that's applied against real property placed onto the tax bills. Um, one approach is to charge a flat fee for improved, for every, uh, improved parcel in the city. A second method is to charge a fee based on a calculation, uh, of the linear footage. Basically, that's the frontage for any given parcel. And then a third approach would be to, uh, assess a fee based on a calculation, uh, for, from the square footage or the overall size of, of a, uh, each parcel. So the, the first method is, is, again, we would just take a flat fee, um, based on the total number of improved parcels, thinking that number somewhere around eight thousand or so improved parcels in the city. And we would just level a flat fee for each parcel, um, improved parcel in the city. Um, the second message, the second, uh, method is, um, using the amount of linear feet. So we would calculate the total amount of linear footage across the city. And based on that, uh, based on the formula, come up with, uh, a number to apply for each linear foot. Um, and then set the assessment for each parcel based on that. Um, the last method is, is again, it's based on square footage. This, this really where you bringing to play how large an overall parcel is. So if you have a residential parcel versus a commercial industrial parcel, this takes into consideration the size of the overall parcel. Um, and so we would set the, set the formula based on this, the amount of square footage for parcels and then calculating the formula based and applying the, uh, assessment based on how large, um, how much square footage is on, on a parcel. Different communities use, use different methods. Um, some are using linear footage, some are using the square footage, some are using the improved parcel. But these would just be some of the different options that could, um, be utilized, uh, with this approach. And we can go ahead and turn Phineas. So just to close it up, um, again, you know, it's a special assessment, you know, with, um, it would be, because we're in the process of finalizing the, the summer twenty twenty bill, this would, uh, be proposed for the winter twenty twenty tax bill. Um, just for, for example purposes, the initial projections, if we just took the per parcel method, and again, that's where we just calculate the number of improved parcels across the city. We'd be looking at an assessment of about fifty-five dollars per parcel. Um, the goal would be to generate four hundred and thirty thousand dollars in, in revenues for the general fund. And as I mentioned earlier, without this, um, special assessment right now, just based on the way that the bu- budget is currently structured, um, because we're having to replace some of those projected revenues that we, um, took out recently, we're then going to have to look at some, some further expense savings, some further cuts out of the general fund. Um, so this was, was an alternative that we wanted to present. Um, you know, again, it's being used in neighboring communities and it's something that could, uh, could help, uh, address some of the financial pressures, um, that the city's general fund is, is, is facing.
Uh, Mr. Carrington, whether the, if we don't consider this, then what other cuts will we have to look at?
Uh, we would, you know, primarily have to look at some, uh, further cuts when we start talk, uh, in, in connection with, um, headcount and, and both, probably both public safety and administrative positions.
Wow.
So, Mr. Carrington, you were suggesting that we have another meeting sometime this week, next week?
Yeah, you know, um, you know, obviously we presented, uh, a lot of information. Um, you know, the water rates were, were provided, uh, last Thursday, I believe. Um, presented the, uh, updated and proposed approved budget on Saturday, which includes this special assessment. We're just now giving, giving council an opportunity to, to digest this, just presenting it to the general public. So obviously we want to provide some time for council to absorb all of this, ask any questions that they may have and give us an opportunity, uh, as needed to update the, uh, current draft of the approved budget.
So what would you suggest that we get back for a special meeting?
Um, I, I think we could do it as soon as Thursday, depending upon council and how quickly they can, um, you know, absorb all this, process all this and provide, um, some feedback.
When is the latest that we could possibly have it done? I see you, Councilwoman Wiley.
Yeah, I've been sitting here. Nobody would unmute me.
We, we can, we can, I can only see the top of your head.
I just see, I ca- I just saw your hand go up. I'm sorry about that. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, appreciate it. In reference to this, um, this lighting assessment, it seems to be you're raising the water rates. Uh, you're assessing a tax on people who have not worked in the past six months. You're, um, uh, they didn't do any foreclosure this year, so that means they're gonna be twice as many next year. And I don't think that it's feasible for us to say that the burden is totally on them. Now, um, then this is money that most of us in the city of Inkster just need to make, okay? So, um, the other alternatives you're looking at, have we given any serious consideration to the, uh, the public safety administrator? I know you're gonna have to pay somebody to do that, but still you're eliminating at least a hundred thousand dollars there.
Yeah, and I think we talked about the public safety administrator would have to be a police officer, a sworn police officer and a firefighter. They would have to have those credentials in order to, to, to do that unless we are really creative and then that would be something that we would possibly, go ahead.
Someone was mentioned in that vein, Michael Moore from E-Course.
Yeah, he's currently in E-Course right now. He used to work here, yeah.
So I'm just trying to figure out how we go about asking this much of them, of the residents, without having a, um, without having done everything we can do. So I, I understand that you're talking about, you know, that people will have to go, you know, or that people will have to have reduced funds or people have to reduce things. But this budget needs to be passed before the first of July. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, most certainly. Well, 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 yeah, we don't wanna.
Within the next two weeks, let's put it that way. And the things that you're presenting, like the wish money, I still call that hundred and fifty wish money, because it doesn't really, it's not really there. And I don't know how you do it in, in city government, but when I do my budget, I have to have that money in order to budget it. So, um, I think that, and, and, and we have been talking among ourselves and we've been putting, I have been putting some things together that may be kind of harsh, but we would like to present those to you all anyway, within the next day or two, to not put the entire burden on them. You're talking about raising their rates, raising their taxes. Then we have the lawsuit. We have Noreen Brown that's gonna be on the lawsuit. We have pending things that are gonna come down the pike and those are gonna be put on the taxes. I can't see the people being able to, to, to function under that weight.
Yeah, and I think we, we, we've definitely been struggling with that and going back and forth. And let's say this, so we're all on the same page. We, we're not assuming what the water wait rates are. This is, these are mandates from the state. So the water rates are what they are. As it relates to the, the lighting assessment, I, I totally, uh, agree with you. At the same time, we're looking at cutting more police and we're looking at cutting more fire and we're, we're already pretty much a skeleton crew here i- in administration. So those are the, really the only places that's affecting the general fund. So I'm looking forward to having those discussions with you all. So whatever you, you, you can come up with, let's figure it out, because that's what we have to do together. Because it's all, it's affecting, it's affecting, this is affecting all of us.
Yeah, it definitely is. And when we're talking about, when you're talking about cutting police rate, police, what, what exactly are you talking about? Cause was that the person you had in the email that was sent off? Because as I understand it, he's retired part-time and doesn't get benefits. I don't see how that's going to impact the budget that much.
Mr. Carrington? Yeah, so, um, we, we, in the, uh, budget draft that was sent on Saturday, the draft of the approved budget, we, um, had changed the reductions in the fire department. You know, the, the recommended budget had six reductions in the, um, budgeted positions at the fire department. We reduced that by one, taking the reductions down to five. And to help offset that, there were a number of different things that were, that, that were going on with that, uh, budget draft. But one of the things that we did, we did reduce by about fifty some odd thousand dollars, the amount of salaries, um, within the police department. Wasn't, as stone exactly how that was going to, going to be, be implemented, but we did, um, you know, identify a specific number. And that's what we had, uh, placed into the, into the budget draft that was shared with council on Saturday.
Councilwoman Wiley, did you have any other questions or comments?
Probably do. I'm looking at my paper here.
Okay.
Because when we lay out, or if we do things of that nature, oh, and, and we still are retaining non-essential personnel, Lucy gonna have some explaining to do, so.
I totally agree. Totally agree. Everything's on the table. Yep. Hold on one second. Councilwoman Wiley?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, I, I, that's complete for now.
Yes, ma'am. Councilman Williams?
I, I just wanted to, um, I, I, I noticed something. In twenty seventeen, the rates was thirteen seventy-five. Okay, and up to twenty twenty, okay, went up to fifteen forty-five, which is a dollar and seventy cent. Okay? And now you're talking about, um, for one year, we're gonna raise the rates a hundred and thirty, a dollar and thirty cent per unit?
Yeah, that, that.
More than that, because of the mandate, we're looking at almost, and you know, I know treasure, you don't wanna get all the way to it, but you're talking about sixty million and then at least, at least another ten million for the Rouge project. You're talking about seventy million that's mandated to us now, within the next two years for us to actually start the project. And we have to tell the state how we're going to do it. If we don't, then they're gonna impose it on us anyway with fines and sanctions. So it, it's just unfortunate that this has happened to us this way, but it is just what it is.
Yeah, but I know a lot of that goes to the county, okay? And, and you don't know exactly.
Make sure, let's back up real quick, because we don't wanna make, we, 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 we don't wanna make assumptions or, is Mr. Carrington, is this money going to the county that we're talking about?
Uh, are you referring to the Rouge Valley?
Yeah, the water rates with the Rouge Valley and the infrastructure.
Yeah, no, it, it, and Jerome can, can, um, speak in more detail. It's basically this, the Inksters are part of, of a certain group of communities that are responsible for, um, that cleanup. So it's not, my understanding is it's not going to the county, so, so to speak. It's just, it's our share of the bill, um, for the, uh, cleanup of the, of the, um, you know, the, the Rouge Valley, if you will. And I, I, I don't know if Jerome is, is, uh, able to chime in at all.
Yes, we gotta unmute. Uh, so to, to the mayor's point and to, uh, uh, Councilman Williams, uh, the money's not going to the Rouge. I mean, the money's not going to the county. The county took out a loan. They took out a SFR loan of fifty million, fifty-five million dollars to clean up the Rouge. Each community that is funded and pays into that fund is responsible and sharing in that cost. Uh, and I know you weren't on council, or, or, I think it was a year ago, maybe two years, when Gleewa came and did the presentation, because we had to adopt the resolution. And one of the council people on there asked a question and said, what if we don't adopt this resolution? And the response was the eagle would probably take us to court and sue us. That, that's how, that's just how serious it is when it comes to environmental. So we share in that cost along with seventeen other communities. When our cost will be, will be determined in October, like Mr. Carrington say. I don't know when those two payments will come about, but we will have to make those payments. And we still are part of the Rouge, because we come in at the lower end of the Rouge. We're at the bottom end of the Rouge, but we're part of the Rouge community. So there's no, there's no getting around those costs.
I, I can understand that, but what I'm saying, what I wanna make clear here also, over the years, in twenty seventeen, okay, we have increased the water, uh, every unit a dollar and seventy cent, okay? And, and we didn't have these mandated. So what I'm saying is now we're talking about another dollar and thirty cents, okay? Now, I know a lot of money over the years, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but a lot of money over the years, we have shipped a lot of our DPS workers and various things like that under the water department because of the money that was coming in, okay? So take it away from the general fund. I can understand that. But now to come back and ask one year time for a person a dollar and thirty cent per unit of water, you know, I, I think it's something that we're gonna have to sleep on.
Well, well, Rep, Rep Williams, let, let me correct you on one thing. We have not shifted a lot of people into the water department. I once upon a time had thirty-five people in my department. That was roads, water, parks, and maintenance for the garages and buildings. I lost people. I lost, I got down to eight. I'm trying to build the department back up, yet the people I didn't lose were in the water department. That's right. I didn't lose them because they were in the water department. But the people that were paid out of general fund jobs were eliminated. They weren't just laid off. They positioned that, all those departments were eliminated. So now I'm down to managing water department and roads. But those are the two specialized budgets that I have that are outside of general fund. So I, I, I lost. I took a tremendous hit.
Any other questions, Councilman Williams?
No, I was just wondering about, about the increase that we had and what did we do with it? But that's okay. We, I can ask it another time.
Okay. Any other comments from this body?
Uh, Mr. Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
So you guys say you're gonna still do some research into, uh, trying to find ways that we can eliminate that, uh, what, four hundred and thirty-two thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
Assessment? Okay, now, I do know, I know you guys have put into the budget that six firefighters would be laid off.
Five.
Five is five?
Yes.
What would, on the revenue side, would that be as far as ambulance? Because I do know, uh, from ambulance, it's like nine hundred thousand dollars revenue. Would that have an impact on that dollar amount?
You know, one of the key things is with, with that revenue is for us to keep, uh, two, um, rescue vehicles, two ambulance vehicles in, in service for, um, each of our three shifts. Currently, we have three shifts, uh, um, daily at the fire department. We operate in three shifts, not three shifts daily, but we operate in three shifts. And so one of the goals is to make sure we are able to do that or make every attempt to do that. Then the reduction would take us down to as, as little as, instead of where we are currently at nine per shift, we would go down to seven per shift. And the reason why we emphasized that seven number was because that would, uh, allow us to try and keep two ambulances on, um, the road, uh, on each shift and help us make sure we continue to, uh, be able to get that revenue, continue to get that revenue. Now, the, the one thing to keep in mind is, you know, you've got people that may be out, may be off, you know, may, may vacancies and whatnot. Um, it definitely puts us in a, in a, you know, less, we have less, um, cushion for when something is not, not, um, uh, going as projected with, with any particular shift. When we have nine, we've got more flexibility, obviously, than when we have seven. The, we understand that, you know, we, we took that into consideration. But it would, you know, certainly be a much, um, a more difficult task to do that with a seven-person shift than when we, uh, than what we currently have with a nine-person shift. But we, we are aware of that and we're trying to make sure we do what we can to, to not hamper our, our revenue in that, that regard.
Okay, okay. All right, that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you, uh, Mr. Carrington.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Wiley?
Yes, um, just two things in relationship to the, uh, budget. Number one is our legal fees. I think the budget stated one point two million dollars this year, recommended and requested. And.
Oh, sorry.
Is that not right?
Uh, that's, that's, um, that is not, um, that, that would not be one hundred percent accurate. I think I understand where you're pulling that number from, but go ahead, ma'am, and, um, and ask your.
Recent budget you sent.
Sure, sure. But I, I, I think it's just, um, the way in which it's laid out in the budget. It may not be completely accurate.
Can you speak to that, Mr. Carrington?
What was the number? Um, and I, I was just going, pulling up the, the, uh, particular number.
And some change?
You, you had, you, you, did you call it the one, one point zero one two number?
Well, what I'm just, I just said that that's a lot and I've been saying that for a while and I've been.
I, I just, I, I just wanted to make sure that that was in the, I, I didn't have the, that particular page.
I know I saw one with a comma and six things after it.
Right. Um, so if, if I'm referring to the same number you are, we, the way that we allocate or categorize this up under the Department two six six, which is city attorney, we have the legal fees and we also have legal settlements. So the money that we're paying for any tax judgment or something like that, any kind of legal settlement, it also is, is included in that, um, department. So that money's not, obviously is not going to the attorneys. It's just for accounting purposes, how we capture and present, um, the money that we collect via the tax judgment and we pay it out to the plaintiffs in that case. So that one million dollar figure again is not at all reflective of what we're paying in terms of our legal fees to our city attorney.
So what is?
Um, we have, as you know, we've got two components to the, to the contract with the city attorney. One is the six, six thousand dollars a month fixed fee for a total of next year of seventy-two thousand. And then we've got what I refer to as the variable component. And currently, the budget has three hundred thousand dollars in there for a total of three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars for, um, projected legal fees.
Okay, well, just in addition to, um, that, just giving, and I think I mentioned something about a cap the last time we were having this, if this is something we could look into? A, um, you know, like a cap for all the patients they, uh, they tried or whatever, then just paying out, paying out, paying out constantly, no matter how long it takes. Just a suggestion. That was just one of the things. And I had one more thing, but you made me forget it. Take me.
Sorry about that. Uh, you can.
I'm going to wait until it pops back in my head and then I'll bug you again.
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect. Okay. All right then. So, so understanding that as relates to the action item, we won't take action today, Mr. Carrington. We'll come back on Thursday.
Yes, if, if that is, is, um, enough time for, for council, I, I would, um, you know, suggest Thursday, just to make sure we stay on track with trying to get this budget in place, uh, and settle.
Do it again, then we'll have enough time to actually meet again.
Exactly.
What's your pleasure, council? We would have to table this item until Thursday.
I move to table.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, any nays? I have it. Motion carries. Item is tabled until Thursday. Um, special meeting Thursday is six o'clock appropriate, uh, council. I'm Mayor Proton Howard. I know that. I'm Mayor Pro Tim Howard. I know that you work. Chisholm, you good? I know you work. Washington, you good? Okay. Wiley, you good with that?
Yeah.
Rev, you good with that?
Yep.
All right, good then. Let's, uh, get that out, city clerk.
You forgot one.
Oh, Charles said, Charles said he was good. He, that's why he made him, he supported the table. Charles, you good?
I'm saying, uh, Ms. Washington, uh, Councilman Washington, I don't know if she weighed in.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Washington.
I'm fine.
You good? Yeah, I thought I said Washington. I'm sorry. I know she works. You good, Washington?
Yep.
Okay, good then. So if we can get that posted and get that out, then we will have a special meeting this Thursday. What's the date on that?
Uh, June eighteenth.
June eighteenth at six P M via Zoom. Is that enough time for us, city clerk?
Yes.
All right, perfect. All right then, let's move right along. Item C.
Item C is consideration accepting the quote from Century Cement Company, Inc. to repair asphalt sections along the pathway, a swell in Colonial Park and ballots at Justice Court. The cost is twenty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty plus a twelve percent contingency cost of three thousand five thirty-four. Totally funds requested for thirty-two thousand nine eighty-four.
Among. There's a four.
Support.
The mood is supported. Any discussion? Any discussion?
No, yes, yes, Mr. Chair. Now, is this for the, uh, last year's budget, I mean, this year's budget right here, Mr. Carrington?
Uh, Jerome is just gonna, um, agenda, we've got, Jerome, are we, we,
Yeah, it, it, um, before the pandemic hit, it would have been for this year's budget. Um, even if we got, I mean, if it was approved tonight and we got started next week, it's gonna carry over to next year's budget. Because in the lateness of the, that we're at the end of our fiscal year. So I would, I would definitely say it's gonna carry over to next year's budget.
All right, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Looks like we lost the mayor.
Okay, Felicia, we should just go ahead and vote on this and just move on until he come back in or what's your question?
Um, yes, I mean, he had called the question already, so.
All right, okay. So is there any more discussion on this item? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those say, uh, nay, any nays? Okay, the ayes have it. Motion approved.
Public participation, Councilman Howard is the next one.
Okay, public participation?
Um, I have one comment that was emailed today to, um, all of us and I will read it into the record. It says, "On the evening of the Mayor Oreo debate moderated by Fox Two Detroit's Charlie Langdon, now Mayor Wimberly made a promise that if elected mayor, he would take a pay cut. According to the proposed July one twenty, twenty through June thirty of twenty twenty-one fiscal year budget, I do not see any indication that this has happened. Mayor Wimberly has stated that the city of Inxter is in a deficit spending and layoffs and cuts may have to be done. Will he be keeping the promise he publicly made to keep the citizens of Inxter to take a salary cut? Thank you for your response." And that was from Council, uh, Connie R. Mitchell.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't have any other public, um, participation that were emailed to me.
For the public again to speak during this time, if you called in, the number, you press star nine from your handset to raise your hand. And, uh, any other persons who are viewing, you can, we have one hand raised. And then any other persons who are viewing, you should have that option from your device, whether it's a laptop or tablet or phone, to raise your hand. And once your hand is raised, you'll be recognized to speak. We're gonna unmute this particular caller, Mayor Bro.
Um, yes, this is Yvette Brock again. Um, in regards to the water rate increases, just from a citizen's standpoint, it's not ideal for us, but I think the citizen could handle it as long as we're not adding other things to the budget. You know, it's, it's this lighting, why they call it assessment, is a tax. I would definitely not want that on my tax bill just for the state of the people who are not paying taxes on time. Now you're putting interest on top of that and we're being kind of punished because we're paying for these lawsuits, we're paying for the need of extra water, which I do understand. And now you want a taxes on lighting. I thought that was part of our taxes anyway. So I don't want to have to pay these extra taxes and I don't feel like the city council members are necessarily questioning enough about this spending. No question, my comment.
All right, thank you, Brock. Okay, do you have any more, uh, Councilman Chisholm?
Nope, I don't see any other hands raised. Again, for callers wishing to speak, you press, the mayor's coming back in at this time.
Okay.
Press star nine to raise your hand or you press the raise hand option from your device. But again, at this time, we don't have anyone to, we have, oh, one other caller. One other caller.
Hello?
Yes.
Okay, hi. So I, uh, want to just, uh, propose to the city council, um,
I need a minute here.
I'm sorry?
If you can state your name. State your name.
I'm sorry. My name is Barbara Albert calling from the Middle Park man of block, caller on behalf of the Middle Park man of block.
All right, go ahead with your statement.
And my proposal is that, uh, this Saturday, June twentieth, we are requesting, uh, from you all, um, assistance in having our, something like our Juneteenth celebration, but we're having a parade through our neighborhood to, uh, say we're free to come out now and just to lift our spirits. And we're just gonna do a parade starting from the Inxter complex and through our neighborhood, from the Inxter pa- complex to Parkwood, down to Henry Rough and back into our, uh, you know, to our own homes. We're not going into public gathering. Everyone would be in their own vehicles or they would be walking or riding their bikes. And we just, um, want to put that, uh, to the city council. Uh, ask for, I guess, what am I saying? We're, I guess, we're, we're asking for your assistance because we may need to block off a, a street or two or just have some, uh, police assistance or, it'd be pretty early, twelve, it's gonna be twelve af- at twelve P M in the afternoon. Thirty, thirty, kind of morning, so it should be pretty good. But just, uh, just want to, um, bring that to your attention. That's what we're planning. And could we have your assistance?
You have a phone number, ma'am?
Uh, I did, I did send an email, so I heard, uh, the, uh, the city clerk said she didn't get an email, so yes, I have a phone number.
Is it the seven, three, four, seven, seven?
Yes, 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 that's it.
All right, good then. We'll follow back up with you. Thank you so much for bringing that to our attention.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Chisholm, I see you have another person to raise their hand.
Yep, and getting ready to unmute them for their, uh, one-minute pu- public participation. Just ask that they state their name for the record.
Hello?
Yeah, state your name, please.
Hi, my name is Ondea Berry.
All right, your call in and your statement?
Um, I am requesting, um, permission to block off my residential street for a Juneteenth celebration on Friday, June nineteenth. Um, the celebration itself would be from two P M to eight P M, but I would need to block off the street from about ten thirty to eight P M.
City clerk, what would she need to do to come in to get, and does it have something that we could?
The normal process is that, um, you, you normally they will request, do this request thirty days out. Um, I do understand that we've been closed, closed due to COVID. Um, there are some procedures, there's some, some approvals that the process has to go through, through different departments. And so I don't know if it, if those approvals will be able to get back in that quick of a fashion. Um, has to go through several departments for the approval. Um, she's supposed to have signatures, um, of the street, of her residence in the street, letting them know that they are, that, um, the street will be blocked off and they have to sign, kind of like a petition, um, to let, um, you know, that she has permission to do so. So there is some parameters that are put in place, um, when you block off a street.
Underst- understanding COVID and what's happening in the nation, um, you know, it would be, I, I, you know, speaking just as the mayor, you know, was, I was supporting something like this. Is it something that we could do to help expedite the process if, if council is amenable to that? City clerk?
Um, yes, I'm, I'm, I'm more concerned about, um, the, uh, signatures of her, of the residents. Um, her having to get everybody's signature. That's what I'm most concerned about. I mean, I can kind of push it through to get approvals from the actual department heads, but the signatures of the resident of the, her neighbors.
Yeah, and I think, Rhonda, can you speak to that? I think you already got that, right?
Yeah, I've, um, spoken to my neighbors already. I, I, uh, everyone has been, has been accepting it. They've been offering their, their own money and their own yards and their own resources to make this happen. Um, I've, this contribution from, um, residents along the street as well as residents throughout the city. Um, I received a lot of support. I'm almost seventy-five percent of the way to my GoFundMe goal. It's just a matter of getting permission to have the block, um, blocked off for the, uh, a lot of time.
Well, mayor, she can, um, come to city hall tomorrow. We are open between eight-thirty and four and she can bring those, the signatures, um, up there. I can get the process started fairly quickly with the department head for the approval.
Good.
Part of it, um, and then council would need to approve tonight, maybe her contingent upon she has the signature of her neighbors.
Hmm, I mean, we could, could we possibly throw that on Thursday? I know it's pushing it. But could we throw it on approval for Thursday or no? The meeting on Thursday, six?
Yes.
Hmm, continues she come in tomorrow and do what she needs to do?
Yes.
Okay. All right, young lady, you, you heard what you need to do.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
We're located, so we'll see you then.
All right, thank you.
Continue that energy. I'm excited about the event.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much for your support.
All righty. Councilman, you got anybody else?
Yes.
All right.
Uh, one other person for one-minute public particip- participation, please state your name for the record. They are unmuted.
Hello, again. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm not sure. This is Barbara Albert from the Middle Park man of block. So again, I'm not sure if I made it clear that, uh, we would do a car parade and our car parade would start from, I'm sorry?
You made it clear. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I wasn't for sure. So we did talk to our neighbors, as I was listening to the young lady. And we have, oh, we have, uh, uh, we have, uh, probably, I think fifty percent, we haven't finished going through the other streets, but we have, uh, about fifty percent participation and it should last us but an hour, maybe two. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
We don't have,
All right then, moving right along, city clerk?
Um, yes, I would like to, uh, say that we are definitely getting those A V applications in. But I would like to let residents know that when you send the applications in to receive your ballot, you have to check if you would like both elections or if you would like the August election or the November election. You have to check one of those boxes. I sent back forty-five applications today where the boxes were not checked at all. They just didn't check anything. They put their signature and didn't check what, what election they wanted, um, a ballot for. And also be sure to make sure that you sign, um, I can't issue you a ballot if I don't have your signature. So you have to pay, uh, particular, uh, attention to those, to those things. Check the boxes, um, for your A V applications. Make sure you check the box and you also have your signature. Thank you.
Uh, just a quick question as it relates to, uh, the ballots. Um, when they're returned, you can return them in the mailbox here at city hall or?
Yes, yes, due to the COVID, we are allowing you to put that into the, um, drop box and, um, the treasurer's dr- drop box on the side of the building. And we have spoken with that department and they will bring, they bring them over to us every morning.
Okay, and as it relates to the actual election, I know that you had spoke before about possibly having a secured box at city hall for people to drop off their ballots as well. Are you?
Yeah, I'm, I'm working, yes, I'm in the process of working on that now. Um, we don't have the ballots even yet. We don't, we don't get the ballots until the twenty-fifth. Um, so we don't have them yet, but, um, I'm, I'm definitely working on that.
Okay, keep up the good work. I know you guys are busy.
Oh, man, yes.
Any questions for city clerk and council? All right, treasurer?
Uh, no comments.
I think that's the first time I'd have heard that.
Think I talked enough for one night.
Councilwoman Washington, you want to start us off?
Um, I'll pass. I, I don't have anything for tonight.
All right, Councilwoman Watley?
Uh, yes, sir. In fact, I remembered what I was gonna ask and this time I wrote it down. So I'm wondering, in reference to the budget, has anybody given any consideration to the city clerk's work share program? Now, I realize the, it sounded pretty good when I read it, but apparently that's going to take a dedicated person to facilitate that particular thing. But it's, it's free money, basically. I mean, you can keep your employees and the state pays some and we pay some. So is, is that being given any consideration?
Oh, yeah, most definitely we're doing that, but Carrington, you can speak to it a little bit more.
Yeah, so, so we are, um, uh, Councilwoman Watley and to, to everyone, we are looking at, um, the, the program that I believe, um, Ms. Wiley's referring to is the, um, was referred to as the Michigan Work Share Program. Um, part of it is, is, is funded through the, um, care, I think it's the cares act, getting tired here. Um, uh, through the, through the, uh, federal government and it's, it's kind of a, a program that allows for, um, it's designed to avoid layoffs and for, uh, reductions in, in the number of hours that are, that are provided. So we're looking, certainly looking at that, seeing if there's a way that we can, um, take advantage of that program. One of the key components of that program runs out in July, so that's one of the issues we're trying to navigate around. But we're, we're trying to look at, um, you know, as many alternatives as we can, can find.
Okay, well, that was the other thing, but I have more. Never fear. Um, the, um, I, on May eleventh, I sent a couple policies around to mayor and council and, uh, I asked for input and the only person I got something back from was Councilman Chisholm. So I was wondering if these policies that were wrote and given to you, if you not responding meant you tacitly agreed with them and we can maybe go ahead and implement? That's, uh, something I need to find out. Hello, hello? Okay, and the, um, also I was wondering how many of my colleagues are interested in attending the, uh, department head meeting? That they have every Tuesday after a council meeting or they have Monday on the off week? Is anybody but me interested in attending those? Is anybody but me interested in attending those?
I would like to, but unfortunately at this time, I can't, I won't be able to attend the meeting.
Even, but if you had the ability, you'd still want to be able to attend them. I know the last administration allowed it. And I was wondering if maybe we have to adopt a policy or something that says we can do that?
Yeah, you know, that, I think that probably needs to fall to the attorney. I mean, and I don't have a problem with um, anyone coming into our department head meetings at the sa- at the same time. I think it's just courtesy and respect and understanding that the administration is separate from this body. And that's why it's designed that way, so.
It's not necessarily separate, but we are, we are the second level of it. And if we don't know what's going on, I mean, it's like anything else. You are administration, we're legislators, so on and so forth.
Exactly.
We're not able to do what we need to do for the citizens if we don't know what's going on. That's all I'm saying.
Well, I have no problem with allowing, letting you know what's going on. All you got to do is ask me. And any reports that I've been giving out, I've been actually sending those reports, any reports you need, I'll send them to you. Um, if you want to come to the, if you want to come to the department head meetings, all you have to do is call and ask me. I don't have a problem with that. Because I want you to be involved in in the process of what's going on.
What's the reason for calling or asking you?
Be- because I am the C E O. Of the company, and everyone works for me except the clerk and the attorney that worked for us.
No, no, he don't work for you. You work for us.
I didn't say, I didn't say that you work, I didn't say that you work for me. What I said was that I'm the C E O. Of the organization, which is what it is.
And to do, to do my job, I need to ask you if it's okay if I do my?
Well, that's not your, that's not your job. Your your job is oversight as it relates to uh, legislation, policy, and as it relates to um, also uh, the the budget, which we're talking about now in order for me to operate.
My job encompasses a lot of things. And to do my job, I have to be effective by having access. Now, that transparency-
You do have access. It's just, it's just respect.
That you promise-
You do have access.
At the beginning of your tenure has not been evident.
One more time, I'm sorry?
I said, that transparency that you promised at the beginning of your term has not been evident, at least not with me. I don't know how the others are are receiving that.
Yeah, well, let me say this. If you ask me directly for anything, you'll get it. You don't have to go behind my back.
I have to ask you-
Administration for anything that works for me.
If I need something, I have to ask you directly, no matter if if your purview or not.
No, what I'm saying to you, Councilwoman, that if if, if again, you want respect, you give respect. And in this position, as we talk about transparency, right from the beginning, I had no transition into the office at all. And I invited all of the council members, yourself included, to come in into daily meetings with me um, along with my staff and help me transition into this office because the previous administration just left it wide open. So I have no problem with working with you. I would love for you to come to the table, as I've asked you before, and I'm asking you now. If you want to come to the table with me-
But I have to, I have to get a special-
I'm the mayor.
I have to, if it's okay, if I come to the table. I was elected just like you are.
Yeah, but you're not elected as the mayor.
And I don't want to be the mayor, but I don't want the mayor stopping me from doing my job. And that's what you tentatively are doing when you say-
I'm not doing that at all.
To ask someone else in this administration or what?
Well, I'm just saying that, you know, because you understand, you understand your role as a legislator than you understand my role as the mayor. It's too different, and that's why you have the legislative body, the executive body, which I'm the executive body, and you have the judicial body. We're all separate, but I just happen to be a part of this body as well.
And you micromanage all of that, correct? I have to come to you if I want-
I'm not saying, I'm not saying that at all. I'm not saying that at all.
So what are you, you're just saying I can come to these meetings now? But I I-
What what I'm saying to you-
When I want to come-
With respect, with my, with respect for my authority and my administration, I would love for you to be there, you're there to help. You're not being a hindrance to the progression of this community.
And I always want in the help to the progression of this unity when I have been allowed to be.
Okay, not a problem. Let me say this. Can I say this? Yes, you can. Are are you finished, Councilwoman Wiley? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think that does it for me.
All right. Go ahead, council, Councilwoman Watley.
You know, I I think it's wonderful, the mayor, mayor, you you said that that you could invite some of us to your meeting, but we are policymakers. And 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 it's your job to run the daily operation. Okay, and and I don't see why, unless we're coming in there to help encourage uh, uh, encourage your minis- uh, your uh, uh, operation or something like that. I I I don't see no need why a council person have to sit up into your uh, meetings or operation. Okay, because just remember, we are policymakers. We we can't make any decisions on the operation of the city that comes through the mayor's department. But we are policymakers. The policymakers, we we establish policy that controls that department, okay? Now, I've heard this before, let me into the meeting, I want to come to the meeting, I want to know what's going on and stuff like that. And I steadily hear the mayor say, whatever you need to know, I'll tell you. I mean, you can't ask him no more than that, okay? I think that somehow we need to, a- as a council person and the mayor get some truthful understanding. Okay, we we we, there's some things that, I I watch every last one of us counsel, that we talked about different subjects in that budget. You see what I'm saying? That we brought out. Okay, and we're looking at the whole total picture of our operation coming up. And it ain't looking good, so therefore, I know somehow we are, we got to put our heads together and and try to figure out what we're gonna do to keep this city moving forward. Now, before we're sitting in the mayor's meeting and stuff like that, this administration that sometime, and let me say this, and not all the time, but sometime you know, we can take a council person, send them into the mayor's meeting and stuff like that, and it could, it could cause him to lose it it could cause him to lose his authority of what he have to do to to operate the city. Okay, so we have to be careful when we coming in. Sometime, sometime we get into the place where we wants to be proud and start trying to micromanage, but we just council person. We're not responsible for the operation. The mayor is, okay? Our our job is to establish policy, and that why I'm on that one subject about policy. I think some of these policies that we need to, we're talking about moving this city forward. And we can different, different things like that. We need to look at some of our policies that we have. We are killing this city. We are some unfriendly people, or somebody coming here wants to invest their money in this community. I wouldn't run here just like them guys did the other day. They ran out of here, okay? Because while we sitting there trying to play hard no Garden City, Westland, and some of the other cities around us are opening their doors and doing anything friendly to try to bring businesses in here. Okay, so we got a lot to think about, okay? We're gonna move this city forward. Okay, we can play, we we can talk, and we can do all of this, but the bottom line is we're gonna become losers if in fact, we don't come together. Okay, now, we we don't have to meet, the the council does not have to meet uh, all all seven people, but at least three of us at any given time can meet and discuss things that we think can help progress this and deliver it to the mayor to just to get his approval and try to move this city forward. Because I'm gonna tell you something. People are saying that, huh, wh- 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 what are we doing? And we inherit a lot. We inherited things now we got to deal with. Water structure, general fund budget, and our police department, uh, fire department, all these different cuts that we had to inherit. And it's not fair to us. We got to take the licks, but we got to be strong enough to come together and understand how we're going to work this out. We can't leave all this in Darren's hands somewhere, like he said. He gave his opinion today. He said, but that ain't, that ain't what, you know, I'm just trying to offer some s- solutions. Before we put our, all our heads together and quit what I say nitpicking, and and come up with some things that we need to do to make this city, uh, I mean, I I was really impressed when uh, some of the things that's that uh, Mayor Pro Tim asked for, Chisholm asked us some things the other day in there. Understand, but we need to come together, and let's come up with some loo- solutions, because they they are solutions to all the problems that we have. And that's what I don't leave in your mind. You know, we we got, you know, I'm not concerned about coming to the mayor's meeting, but what what I am concerned is the mayor keep me informed on what's going on and what movement that he's making, okay, and then, and then now, now that's what I'm concerned about. I don't want to go out here and tell somebody the mayor going west, when he going east, you see what I'm saying? As long as he keep me abreast of what's going on, then I can move, and that's, and that's what we all should be. We are policymakers. Love y'all, y'all, peace. I didn't mean to talk that long, but I think it's a, it just, it just, it just a talk of unity that we need to come together. Because a lot of things, we we got to come together on a lot of things. You know, I I I heard some things Chisholm said, I heard some things Ms. Howard saying, I heard some things Ms. Wiley saying, and everything, Ms. Washington, but let's take all of them and take them and organize them, and then go through it and see what we can do to make this this city a better place. Because right now, Inkster in trouble.
Thank you. And thank you, Councilman Chisholm.
Uh, yeah, I sent an email out to everybody in response to what Mr. Carrington has sent us, speaking to the budget. I did talk to him verbally, so I got a lot of clarification, and we discussed a few things. And per my email, I did say that I'll be following up with my suggestions or recommendations, things like that for the budget. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Shaw?
Uh, yeah, I just want to uh, say, um, I just want to welcome the uh, two code enforcement officers that we uh, we have now. I seen a couple of, I mean, I seen one of them on the beat already, so I just wanted to uh, welcome them to the city of Inkster. And also with the with the assessment of the of the taxes for the lighting, you know, it's it's one thing that we try to im- impose this onto the residents without taking it to um, taking it to the ballot for for consideration. Uh, that's where I'm at concerning that. Uh, I think we ought to take it to the people and let them decide whether or not they want this imposed uh, assessment on the lighting. And also, um, you know, with the cuts that we're going to have to make, and I have said this over and over, I know the storm is coming, uh, we've been talking about it. We've been in this position before, uh, we know uh, the tough decisions that has to be made. And we're gonna have to make some very tough decisions. We're gonna get some tomatoes thrown at us, um, and there's gonna be some people that's not want to like the decisions that we have to make to bring the city out of the deficit that it's in. Uh, we was before in a consent agreement, and we had to make some tough decisions then. And we're gonna have to make some tough decisions now. The only thing that's different, some some people talked about, you know, there's a different different time, a different age, and what have you, and I understand that, but what still remains the same is the situation that we're in and we had faced before. And we have to, we have to be resolved in the things in which we're going to do. Uh, we have to stay together in doing it. We have to be on a united front in making these decisions. And even also with some of the solutions that we're going to come about. Now, Mr. Mr. Chair, you know, I talked about, you know, the police and fire. And one of the things I have uh, talked about is sending this to the ballot. Uh, we should be able to take up a mill or two for public safety. And it can all, it can alleviate some uh, headache on the budget. And we we are in a good position to do it now. Uh, the election is coming up in August and November. We can get it on the ballot. We can get this on the ballot, have the people decide. And this could be a way for them to speak on what they want for as po- public safety, instead of us having to chop and cut because we did it before, and people didn't like it. They didn't like it, but we had to do it in order to bring us back into a solvent position. Now, as we've seen, you know, in previous years with the water rates, we should have been consistent throughout the years, but unfortunately, unfortunately, we went up and down. Uh, we had to, they had to, the previous council had to make some decisions, and I understand that. But we have to keep a consistency so that we will not expend ourselves right out of the city of Inkster, because it will be expensive to live here. And if we don't have no great attractive factors, people are not going to want to be here. The residents are not going to, I'm not going to want to be here because it's very expensive to live here. Let alone have some attractive things in the city to go to. So just think about that, and my colleagues to think about that. We can get this on the ballot for public safety, and it can alleviate millions of dollars, millions of dollars. So I just want us to to consider that, and I am on board with all of my colleagues. Because I know the importance of us having to work together. Not to bicker, not to fight, because that ain't what the people want to see. We will be a laughing stock as we continue to attack the mayor and continue to attack each other, for what? It does none of us no good because we should all have the same purpose, and that's the quality of life in this city. That's all I have, Ms. Chip.
Thank you, Councilman Shaw. Mayor Pro Tim Howard?
I have nothing.
All right then. Um, to the community, City Hall is open. Um, we had a smooth transition today. It was our first day actually opening. Um, thank DPS, also the police chief that uh, came over with this first thing this morning. Was working out uh, the city clerk, of course, and everything that you do, so um, we've been just moving right along. We're encouraging everybody, when you come to City Hall, we do have some masks at the front desk. Um, and of course, hand sanitizer at the front desk, but we want you to wear your mask. So we're we're operating uh, eight thirty A M. To four o'clock P M. Monday through Friday. Is that correct, city clerk?
Yes, it is, sir.
All right, um, as it relates to um, the Opens Meetings Act, now, um, I believe that David Jones is on the line. And David, if you can speak to that a little bit as it relates to the executive order and us having Zoom calls and us coming back into um, city uh, City Hall to actually have public meetings. Is that something that we need to do right away, or or how how should we proceed with that?
Well, the executive order goes through the month of June, which permits it. Um, there have been some lobbying to extend the meetings and the Open Meetings Act via electronically. It hasn't happened yet, but there several entities are lobbying the governor to extend it. Uh, but at least through the end of the month of June, it's permissible.
Okay, so if they don't extend it, then we have to look at the first meeting in July being held as an open meeting, and how do we cover social distancing?
Well, I think that's an administrative issue. We can, you know, try, depending on how many people want to come, just try to monitor the the attendees and seats, maybe put only so many seats, take some seats out of the actual council chambers, you know? Like, where there will be three seats, maybe just have them one, and once those seats are occupied, indicate that, you know, for public safety and health concerns that we're at capacity, and we encourage people to view the meetings online or through other methods.
Yeah, well, with the leadership of our governor, uh, we definitely have seen the flattening of our numbers um, in the city of Inkster. Um, each time that we would have a death in the city of Inkster related to COVID, I would get a call from the the county execs team. And we haven't received one of those in almost three weeks. So um, with the case numbers at three forty-three for the entire city of Inkster, we haven't re- we haven't had any deaths in about two and a half, about two and a half weeks. So we definitely see that um, we're we're flattening out of the numbers, but we definitely have to stay vigilant as it relates to social distancing, making sure that we're wearing our masks when we're out in public. Um, as it relates to the census, thank you, Curtis Dean Barge, you have been doing an excellent job, and um, Curtis Dean has informed me that uh, she's been reaching out to each one of the council members, and she's partnered them with um, one of the count committee members, so I encourage you guys to continue to work with them. Um, it's it's one of the most important things, of course, outside of COVID as it relates to our community. Um, we we hear it all the time as it relates to um, what the resources will do for us. Um, we, we hear it all the time as it relates to, um, what the resources will do for us. Um, I believe that the number is third, uh, three thousand dollars, is it three to five thousand dollars, Steve? Regina, is that about right, is that the, the number, three thousand or five thousand?
Five thousand.
It's five thousand that we would get per person within the city of Inkster that's counted, so Inkster be counted. We're about sixty percent right now, I don't know if Curtis Dean Barge is on the line, but, uh, she has some things that's coming up here in July. Um, she's looking to do a parade also within the city of Inkster, and I encourage all of us to, to get involved and really wrap our arms around as we're getting back out into some sense of normal that we're out. Of course, calling at least ten people, talking to them about the census, but also too about, uh, making sure that we're filling out the census, um, as well. As it relates to the state of the city, um, and, uh, former councilwoman Mitchell is on the line, and she proposed some questions to us as, as a body, and I will be responding to those in writing, but I wanted to make sure that, um, I addressed it to the, the general body and the general populace. As it relates to the state of the city, um, back in, I believe it was February, uh, the question that came up from Shirley Hankerson as it relates to me doing a state of the city address, and I kind of explained at the time that, you know, I just was getting into office for the most part, we were wrapping our hands around the budget as it relates to the deficit that we were dealing with, and we were looking to do something in April. Well, because of COVID, that hasn't happened, and, and understand that we've been out of the office March, April, May, and now we're still on Zoom in June. So we will be coming back, um, hopefully, um, stronger than ever, and we'll be able to give a sense of where we're at as it relates to the community as a whole. As it relates to the downtown development project that was talked about with the previous administration, we do have plans for a downtown development. There were never, there was never a developer at the table that had signed a memorandum of understanding with this, with our organization, which, meaning that we didn't have a developer locked in to actually do the project in the city of Inkster. The project was projected at thirty million dollars, no matter what the administration is, and if the administration changes, however, if a developer decides to walk away because the administration changes, then that's something that we don't want to have in our community anyway. When we talk about a unified front and truly working together, we want to make sure that we have, as we're talking about people coming in our community, doing business, and we're being open minded, and we're being all friendly to people and doing business, we want to have great corporate partners moving together. Now, I will say this to, uh, former mayor Nolan, if you do have the resources to get this done as it relates to the downtown development project, I'm open to talk, I want to move forward. I actually own quite a few properties in the downtown area. Since two thousand eight, I've been talking about downtown development of the city of Inkster. Not only have I put my blood, sweat, and tears, and that I've actually put my money into it, and I actually own property in that area that we're looking to develop, so I'm excited about possibly putting out an RFP or RFQ, um, with the council's support as we bring this project together. I think it makes sense, it actually looks like a pretty decent project overall. I just know, um, as I was on the former side of it, and I was looking through the projects, um, I had perused it, and some of the properties that was actually included in the project, they weren't owned by the city. And as a business owner in the actual downtown development that was actually being proposed, I was never approached about being a part of it, so I actually looked at some other businesses that's in that area right now, like the Olaf Fontaine. Um, I actually reached out to them and talked to them, and they said that they're actually moving back in the building, they're looking to open back up a specialty shop and a pump shop, and I asked them that they talked to the previous administration about it, downtown development? No, but their building was actually included in it. So we want to make sure, as we talk about transparency, Councilwoman Wiley, that we're all working together, that we're all singing in the same voice. So as we talk about our vision for Inkster, number one, we have to be safe. Number two, we have to get clean. Our community as a whole, just overall, it's our responsibility, everyone's responsibility. If you see tall grass, like Councilman Shaw said, the new code enforcement officer is done, she's doing a tremendous job, we're actually looking to add another code enforcement officer. Call us, let us know, tall grass, debris, Jerome and his folks, they've been doing a tremendous job out in the community, trying to get the grass up. So we have to work together in order to get our community and make it attractive. The number one goal for me right now in this office is to make sure that we stay safe and that we stay clean. And that's what I'm working on right now, and I will be expressing that more as we move forward within, of course, our community and working together. Now, lastly for me, Councilman Williams and Councilwoman Watley, Rhonda did send you out, uh, she told me to make sure that I reminded you that she sent out to, uh, uh, invitation for you to join me. Um, the director of HUD has reached out to me as it relates to some issues as for housing, and what's happening in housing currently right now. Um, Chief Riley sent out, and Chief Ratliff sent out an actual email with some pictures, and we, we included the director of housing, um, from Michigan State, from the Michigan, from the level of Michigan, the state of Michigan, and, um, I want for us to be on the call with them, and the call is actually tomorrow morning, so you guys should have that email, please confirm with her that you guys can jump on. Because the reason why I want you guys on the call is because it's your district that's being affected. So I hope that you join me on that. All right then, I know that we have, uh, Adriana, I know that, uh, La Fontaine is supposed to go through site plan review, we're, we're working on it, so. Ms. Jordan just actually chimed in, oh, and said this was the site, so we're working on that. All right, um, closed session items, David, you have something for us?
Yes, briefly.
Okay, then, could I have a motion to go into closed session?
A move.
All in favor, signify by saying aye? All right, let's go into closed session. Phineas, we're on you.
All right, stand by.
Get everybody back?
Yeah.
Motion to come out of closed session?
They, they came out of it.
Oh, yeah, I forgot to, sorry. All right, then, um, Alicia, what you got for us?
Um, item D is going to be to vote in accordance with the vote that was taken in closed session, Bevins.
So move.
Support.
Move and support it, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any names? I have a motion carries. Anything else?
No.
Call for adjournment?
Motion.
Move and support it, all in favor by saying aye?
Uh-huh, aye.
Aye.
All right, you guys have a wonderful evening, thank you guys for joining us one more time, we'll, we'll soon.
Bye-bye.